If only we could get like more people from the community, you know. It's kind of always the way the world works. Although I did do the one thing I told my wife I wouldn't do, came with my Halloween mustache. My, my costume was Andy Reid. Commercial, so it's more, you know.
Jackson Chicky Nuggies?
Right. Can you explain that bundling part again to me? But this time with the French.
Oh, man. Patrick? Just me.
I assume Kira's not coming.
No, she won't be here. She had, uh, previous plans, so when we could get it rescheduled for today or like, don't worry about it, I'll handle it.
Sure. And I guess we probably have everybody and yeah, we have, so we'll call a. What do you call, a motion for bring the meeting to order?
So move second.
Alright, all in favor? Well, this our first item is the approval of minutes from September. I didn't notice any changes that had to be done, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second that?
All in favor? Whole business is the preliminary and final plat of the pond third edition.
Alright, let's have a PowerPoint here for you again. Uh, main thing we'll go over tonight is some of the information that was brought up due to commentary from the four residents at the, uh, public hearing back in September. Uh, so again, just to get you back up to speed, um, over the past month, uh, applicant Mike Wynett, who's here tonight in the front row, uh, has applied for preliminary and final plat, uh, for pond third edition. Uh, this is a replat of a, uh, one lot plat, uh, that was previously done back in twenty eighteen. And he's looking for four single family lots on the two point four three acres. So as I said, we did have a public hearing back on September twenty seventh of, uh, the last actual council or planning commission meeting we had. We did have the four neighbors, um, that provided public commentary at the meeting along with, uh, Mr. Wynett as the applicant. Uh, main questions raised were really, uh, centered on traffic, property values, and then, um, also the, uh, wetland and water issues. So, um, that was ultimately what led to the item being tabled to tonight's meeting. And we'll get right into some of the background information we collected over the past month for you. So regarding traffic, we did do a traffic study, uh, with our radar counter out on, um, Seventh Street Northeast there over the time period of, uh, October tenth to October seventeenth. Basically, what we determined was that the, uh, ADT, which is average daily traffic, was, uh, just under forty-five hundred cars, which is right where we expected it to be. That's where the traffic has been on that road, um, going back, uh, actually about ten years now. Um, the one thing we did note, and we've seen this in other speed studies on that road, is that the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is where MINDOT determines, um, traffic speed, uh, being posted at, is thirty-five point nine miles per hour, which is just a little bit obviously above thirty-five, so a little bit of a speeding issue. Um, when you look at the pure data, um, the major issue that, uh, we have there is twenty-eight percent of the vehicles that are in the west pond lane, um, are found to be speeding. Does that have anything to do with this plat? No. Um, what it does, uh, basically inform us is that we, we know we've had a continual, um, speeding issue on that road. I think to that point is really, um, why we don't support additional driveways, because you do have, um, a number of speeding vehicles there and, and having each lot have its own individual driveway, I think, could be, uh, just another conflict point. Um, so that's just one thing from, um, staff and the police department's perspective, but police department has had their speed trailer up there, um, a number of times over the summer. Um, they will plan to do that again. And then one thing we'll look at is actually applying for a grant, um, same grant that we got the speed study, uh, or the speed sign for down on Tenth Avenue, um, and that was put up in the past year. Um, that was through Center Point Energy and just have that permanent reminder for people that are on Seventh Street that, um, there is a speed limit and you're violating it if you go over thirty-five. Um, other long-term issues, talking with our city engineer that we could look at would be a roundabout at the intersection of Seventh Street and Lexington Avenue. There would just be a mini roundabout, if anything. We obviously don't have any street projects in that area, um, in the near term, but, um, should further development happen, there's some vacant land, um, just east of the Heritage Park and, um, Heritage Estates neighborhood, that might trigger, uh, further, uh, changes to the intersection here, which happens to be adjacent to the site, but, um, talking to city engineer and traffic engineer, we don't believe there's any, um, issue that this four lot development has on the traffic. It just happens to be in that location. So we don't think there's any additional ill effect that, uh, the four homes would have there. But we do recognize there are some ongoing, um, concerns up there that we will look at systematically. Regarding property values, so the question was raised from a couple of the residents about, um, these homes being smaller and or valued less, which would then bring down the value of adjacent homes. Um, spoke with Michael Thompson, provided him the plat, the drawings, the grading plan, everything. Um, this is a common question they have received elsewhere in the county with, um, slab ungrade homes, as these were proposed as. Um, he actually took and overlaid, um, some of what we had kind of looked at last month, um, the four homes directly to the east along Seventh Street, overlaid them right on these, um, four lots here, and his determination was the lot sizes are very similar for what's buildable. You do have a large pond, which in his opinion also would bring value up, um, above those, and then, um, in his opinion as well, being a new home, um, and likely for probably an older demographic. He doesn't see any reason that these would bring any values down, and they have not seen that, uh, have a negative impact on neighboring property values elsewhere in the county. He did know, obviously, until they're built and until they can, um, do their, uh, assessment of them, we can't promise that, but they have not seen the similar type of development have a negative effect on property values for existing homes. So that was the information from the assessor. Regarding water quality, we had a resident, um, bring up that, um, wondering why we weren't following our thirty-five percent impervious surface requirement. Um, I indicated at the meeting that we did not have a thirty-five percent, uh, limit. We, we do not. Um, what he was referencing was actually our, um, surface water management plan, which referenced just in, as an illustration, it was not part of an ordinance or anything, that if we had a thirty-five percent, um, impervious surface requirement, certain other provisions of that would need to be put into our zoning ordinance to, uh, effectuate that. Ultimately, we don't have that right now. We will not probably have that until we become an MS four city. And even with that, I put together a little table in the report, if you looked at it, um, we're not even near that for any of these lots, because you, you actually have to include not just the land for where the building can go, but also the area of the pond. And the pond is so large in these lots, you're not going to get to your impervious surface, um, being an issue. So confirm that with our city engineer and our water resource staff at the engineer, um, so we don't have, uh, that being an issue. We're not anywhere near that being an issue here, so just wanted to confirm that as well. Um, again, we'll just put some air photos up real quickly for everybody, um, zoom in a little bit, and as you can see, you know, roughly about fifty percent of the lots is really, um, in the pond slash wetland area, with the remainder being the, the buildable area and pad area, which really are not that different than, um, the adjacent properties, particularly those four lots directly to the east, uh, that front to, um, Seventh Street Northeast. Just a drawing of the preliminary plat again, um, we had talked, they are proposing a shared driveway for the three homes on the west portion of the plat with the fourth lot on the very east, having a driveway direct to Lexington Avenue. These are utilizing curb cuts that are already in place and have been in place for a few years now. Shared sewer and water, um, plans were submitted, have been reviewed. See if I can show that on a drawing here, forward a little bit. One second. Hopefully I have that loaded up. Eh, it's really hard to see in this drawing. I'll try to highlight my pointer, but you have, um, sewer line that will end up being private, indicated, uh, in this area here. And then there's a water line, uh, the stub is already in from Seventh Street, but then the water line, uh, is right over here, and you can see each of the little service lines coming off of that for each of the homes. So no issue for utilities from staff perspective or anything like that. Oh, there's actually a better, um, version of some colored in, uh, showing the private utilities that come off the public stub, so. I think with that, I don't want to necessarily go through all the conditions once again, um, because we've done that at the last meeting, but, um, from staff's perspective, uh, it does meet the minimum requirements. Uh, there are no variances required to be needed here, um, and that is, uh, continues to be our recommendation for, um, the preliminary final plat as it is in front of you tonight. Maybe I'll just pop up the conditions real quick here. So we did have a few different conditions that, um, and I'll just make note of a few of them that might be applicable to point out. We do have some development fees that are due and owed for park dedication, um, sidewalk fee, and then the utility commission for moving some, and installing electric infrastructure. Um, then installing that sidewalk along the, um, entire east side of the property, um, per our sidewalk plan that the city has adopted. Uh, maintaining a row of trees along, um, Seventh Street Northeast, which they are there currently, we just want to make sure that they remain there. Uh, a couple other things to point out here. Um, getting those shared private, uh, driveway and utility easement agreements filed, uh, before any home is occupied, and then, um, just some common ones here that we have, uh, all of our legal fees and engineering fees covered by the applicant, if we have any. And then finally, we are looking for an additional six-foot setback from the conservation easement for the homes. That gives a little room for a deck or a little room for a patio off the back of the homes, um, that wouldn't normally be there, because normally by the ordinance, you could build right up to that conservation easement line, but this is requiring an additional six feet, just to give a little bit more of a wiggle room there. And then the final one I'll point out is just, uh, making sure that all the driveways off the private driveway are at least twenty-two feet in length, and that, again, provides for a large pickup truck to not hang out, um, into that private driveway. So common standard that we've had, um, for other developments of this type. Oh, I guess one final one, uh, all the building elevations need to be elevated two feet above the, uh, high water level of that pond and well land. And that's just a standard, uh, land and water preservation ordinance requirement. So I think with that, I'll just put the plat drawing back up here. Uh, no public hearing required, um, but we do again have the applicant, um, here tonight. Um, you can certainly take public comments if you'd like, but, um, open the discussion back up to the planning commission.
Is that a question of the sidewalk? Because I thought the sidewalk was going to be on like the west side, but there's obviously the problem with, as you got closer to the pond, not necessarily being enough space versus the east side, because I noticed in the comments from Matt, he was saying the steep, I guess, the driveway slopes.
Yeah.
On the east side.
So we're requiring it to go, you see, are you seeing my pointer? Maybe you're not seeing my pointer.
Or maybe I'm thinking the other, maybe it's, uh, I'm sorry, it might be the Lexington.
There we go. So the sidewalk will be required to be installed by, uh, the applicant right along this, uh, would be the east side of this property, but the west side of Lexington. And the reason for that is if you put it on the east side of Lexington, as you get further north, the driveways and the slopes are just too steep to keep that at an ADA pass. So this is the, the route that I'll have to take, basically get you right up to the connection at the trail of Bohemia and Lexington, where the trail kind of comes from the greenway, um, right into the park there, so it actually works out well for that.
My question is on the shared driveway again. How is that going to be maintained and?
So like any other private driveway, so they would have to file that of record with the county, and that would be for this particular plat, you'd have lots one, two, and three that would have to be, uh, subject to that, um, restriction for maintenance and, um, upkeep of that private driveway. And we have a number of those throughout town. We don't call them private streets anymore because it isn't meeting any street standard, and the reason we don't need that is because we have, uh, fire lane or a parking lane that fire trucks can park right on Seventh Street, and they can access that property just fine. So we don't need an actual road, so it's not public, it just can remain private and just remain open. We have similar arrangements like that, that town development directly south of Cobhorns, for example. They just have a maintenance and, um, easement agreement for all the homeowners that live in that area. Um, so right along those same lines that we have going on there.
Where's south of Cobh?
Directly south of the, uh, Little Duke's gas station.
The slab on grade, uh?
Yeah, the slab of grain town area there, yeah.
Cute little houses.
The cute one.
Yeah, they're very nice.
Duplexes and one triplex.
So I guess I have a question for Michael then, if you could answer. So, and I don't know if this is just as an example or not, but are all four of these houses, the similar layout or plan, and they're just turned, uh, to? Do you know what I mean? They all look like they're the same square footage, they're same interior design, except one driveway faces this way, one.
Uh, that was only a meeting. Um, if I sell the lot, they have their own.
They have their own right to, to design it, whatever they.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and I think, and I think that's worth thinking about too, because I mean, we're reviewing the plat.
Right.
We're reviewing that there can be four homes on here, not the configuration, even the shared driveway where we're not, they don't have to stick to that either. Right, once we approve this.
Well, they do to a point, because they can't.
Yeah, if they wanted their own driveways, they'd have to get an easement.
They would have to come back for, they would have to come back for variance. Oh, that's right, that's right, okay.
But yeah, this is not a planning and development review, um, that is not required for single-family homes in a single-family district, so we really don't have any review of home style type, that type of thing. Um, we do actually, obviously have our minimum home standards, which requires a two-stall garage and certain minimum home dimensions, which, you know, these do meet. Um, and then obviously they would have to meet building code, but, um, looking at the grading plan and everything, likely would not be able to do anything more than a, um, split level type home here, just due to the, uh, water table and everything. Uh, but as they're drawn in, just for the sake of, because we require that for preliminary plats, just a footprint of a house and show that something can fit there, yeah, that's what they're showing is slab on.
And I'm not worried about like the, the split level. What I'm worried about is that, or what I really would like to see, and I think the homeowners are concerned, is that all four of them will be cookie cutter, same color, same thing, and it has a very much multi-attached home feel to it.
Yeah, and my opinion, and I, I'm sure I can verify this with the city attorney, is I do not believe we have any ability to regulate that, because it's, again, we're just looking at the plat, which is drawing the lines on, on the map.
Right, so I'm kind of alleviated a lot of concerns from, from the taxpayers in that area.
Yep, yep.
And, you know, and I'm not saying that we even have a legal leg to stand on, but I mean, that's the biggest issue that they're having with it, is that they're all going to look very.
Yep.
Um, you know, same color, same, same layout, just twisted a little different way, and it's going to ruin the uniqueness of the neighborhood. So that is a concern, but I, if you could have the attorney, because that, if we approve this, it still has to go to council, then I can ask that question.
Correct.
That.
Yep.
As well, I think I know where it's, where it's going anyways, but I mean, that's the.
Well, it all comes down to each lot selling, because it sounds like for Mike.
Yeah.
You're not going to sell all of them in one. It just, you know, it could be one sold this year, one sold two years from now.
No, but, uh, and, and I like that idea, because that, that'll mix it up, right? That'll give everybody a little bit of different color, different look, different, you know, which.
That's not to say somebody come in and buy all four tomorrow, you know.
Exactly, so that's.
And that's just what I wanted.
Or from, or from Mike really just saying, I'm going to build four spec houses, and they're all going to be the same, because I can. I mean, I, from a business standpoint, I get it, because you could order all the, you know, every, the layout's exactly the same, but from the aesthetic, the aesthetic part is, is the biggest issue that I, I, I'm just siding with the neighbors that have that concern. Whether it's right or wrong, it's a concern. It's a legitimate concern, and that's why I'm bringing it up, so, and that's why I asked those questions. But, um, anyway, so, um, that, those were the only questions I had. I, I just would like you to check with the city attorney, so, because that'll come back up at council.
Yep.
So.
I know a lot of concerns, and like, we're in a lot of questions last meeting, we're about the, the shared driveway and the loss of yard space and that sort of thing with a versus a typical out, straight out driveway. Um, but I'm looking, you know, looking at, you know, the, um, the city engineer's comments around, you know, around traffic, right? And because that, that was another comment, right? That was, there's, it's going to be too much traffic coming out on the road, but then there's a shared driveway, which is unappealing. Well, if you get, if you go from a shared driveway to a multiple driveway, that, that's more traffic coming out at more access points, more conflict points. And the city engineer's comments, you know, it's more likely that they're going to be coming out forward out of this, out of this driveway than they are would be backing out of the single driveway, so I think that makes me a little comfortable, and then, you know, like, those comments then, before, like, we talked about, where if, if at all, we're approving this plat, the way that it's, it's laid out here with the access point, shared driveway, and if they do ever try to come back for a, you know, if it's a new owner, buy them all four, and they want to come back for different driveway configuration, they have to come for, for us anyway, if they want to make that change, so.
Right.
I would just hope we can make it easier now.
Yeah.
Like, let's allow them their own driveway access, so. Spare them sort of that headache.
Yeah.
But I don't know, yeah, as far as the trail, I don't have any concerns about four additional houses on that road. You know, I mean, it's, it's going to be a, you know, not really going to add much.
I mean, and, and, and it's, it's prob, it's, what's an alternative?
It's buildable land.
It's buildable land, it's, it's zoned that way.
I, I agree.
So. Um, I can make a motion if we're, if we're discussing. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat and final plat of the pond third edition.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, yeah, we'll probably, if I make sure I can get attorney, um, input on that final question, should be at the council next Monday then, Mike, so. Send you. That's when final review would occur.
The final hoop, the final hoop.
The big stamp.
Yep.
Uh, what comment? Uh, trick or treat that area? It's awesome.
Oh, yeah, that area, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, I don't know how much we want to get into any of these other items. The main thing I needed to move forward with was that item, but, um, did anybody have any general questions on the, um, updated concept report on the commercial building design? I, I ultimately, I don't have a PowerPoint or anything for it, but I ultimately, as Kira and I got researching this more and talking to some other cities about it, there is a heck of a lot, uh, to this topic.
This is a monster. Excelsior is huge.
If we really were going to get into it, um, you really can, and I don't know the appetite for that, but I would hate to get that going without having the comp plan process wrap up, and we're kind of in the same boat a little bit for, um, some items that we have going on at the park board and, and, and similar, where it's like, hey, let's wait, we, we know there's appetite for that from the comments that we've got, but we don't want to jump ahead of that, because the council may not want certain things in the comp plan, and it may not work ultimately, uh, to move towards a new ordinance with design standards, and it hasn't even ended being part of the comp plan, so that's kind of where, where I'm at with it. Um, I thought it was good information to provide to you. Um, I know that doesn't help, um, you know, Randy was here last month, the comment on his building specifically, but, um, I, I just think it's going to take a lot more time, and I would hate to not have the backing of, of the comp plan and that whole process to, to.
Right.
See that forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think just in general, I think there's some expansion that we can do to the language. You know, what, what you, what's interesting is, I think just in general, you see some of the, the language that are in some of these other cities, they use a lot more words like should, and, um, I don't know, should, I guess is the big one that I see, where a lot of what, what we have in our language is shall be and must.
Yep.
I think, and I, and I don't know what kind of plat process they have in place for the, you know, their cities, for the interpretation of the word should. Like, well, you told me it should, but I don't want to, you know, like, what's the process there versus you must or you shall have? Or it shall be, right? Where we're more hard and fast.
Yeah.
In our language.
I think there's a lot of work in that, um, and a lot of different directions that could go.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think we need to have that conversation to a degree, but I, I think we're maybe a little ahead of the comp plan, and where that'll, um, head out to, and obviously, Brandon, you've seen, um, some of the draft language about how important downtown is and all that. I, it's not clear yet where that'll go, and we're going to have a workshop, Sean, at some point here in the near future with planning commission and council. This is one of many topics that'll kind of get broached at that point.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just think it's a little premature.
Sure, let's table it then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay, I make a motion that we table the, uh, concept review of zoning ordinance amendment, uh, commercial building design and site requirements for the B-one district, city of New Prague.
I'll second that. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, uh, I'm not really prepared to talk on the complete streets or anything else in here. At this point, we'll just push that. We, we meet again on, um, the fifteenth of November, a little early this month. Um, we will have, just to give you a little preview, we will have a condition's permit and variance request for the, um, former, or what will be the former urban flea market location for an indoor shooting range and, uh, retail gun shop in that location.
Is that the mill?
Yeah, at the mill.
Okay.
Um, so currently working on that report right now. The variance is needed to allow them to be less than a thousand feet from a alcohol dispensing, uh, location. So I think that's going to be the number one thing to debate and get over, because when the ordinance was written, the intent was really to push that type of a, uh, use out to the industrial park. But I think that's seen as cost prohibitive by this particular applicant, who as I can just say it is, um, two F by C, um, that has the gun shop on the end of town. And with the mill and their attempts to reuse the, uh, property there, um, do some renovations, and, um, they're looking to financially back him to locate in that location where Urban Flea Market has been. They need to put in bathrooms, they need to do all nine yards, everything, uh, Urban Flea Market needed to do, but they, um, are financially backing this unlike the Urban Flea Market project. So I don't know that we'll have a recommendation for approval from a staff level, but I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on, that's coming notices should have been received by people probably today. I don't know if it's going to be controversial, and I think the police department thinks it might be, because we had a, uh, issue, a gun issue in a whole residence near there in that neighborhood. Um, I know this isn't really related to that, but it's just on that topic.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, there's a number of safety requirements and design requirements and everything that come into play, um, that we have in our ordinance and that, um, they're required to, to meet OSHA for, you know, air quality and all that, so. It's kind of, kind of our world right now. We're working, working on it for the past week, and we got to get it done by the end of next week, so.
Where's the, the liquor store or the bowling alley or what?
Uh, it's where, anywhere you can be served for onsite consumption, so it would be the bowling alley, Casey Hall, the depot.
Oh, yeah.
Even though the depot's just got a, a setup license, um, actually the. City club, and then it actually gets to, uh, chalk it up at the very edge of that.
Wow.
So there's actually a number of them in there.
Okay.
So their variance, they're looking to just have that reduced to five hundred feet, which would then be nobody in that radius. Uh, talking to the police chief, the biggest concern is really people imbibing in beverages and deciding, I don't know, let's go to the gun range, and even though it should be on the operator to turn those people away, just not to have it that easy to happen, even though you can hop in a car and you could drive from Jordan.
Right, right.
To the, even if it was in the industrial park, you could just drive across.
So that's kind of, that's kind of the ultimate, and that's where we're kind of struggling. It's like, we have it in the ordinance, it's a fairly new ordinance, it's only two years old. Like, should we even be giving a variance for that? But I get the, the building and the reuse that they're trying to do down there. But I get the, the building and the reuse that they're trying to do down there, so.
But it's just kind of one of those, it's like a gun range, because it's like literally about, what, three blocks off the main street, so.
Two.
Or is it two? Okay.
Wild batch of the rep parties down there.
Yeah, so I don't know what our recommendation is going to be. Just a portion of that through, but we could have a big crowd for that public hearing.
But yet, if I go a thousand feet to the direct south, I could probably shoot geese.
Right, right out of your field.
Uh, you could.
Right, so, I mean, you know, it's like.
So I think there will be varying opinions here, I guess.
Just not one of those things I envisioned in, you know, like the industrial park, you know? That's where I think we all kind of figured, yeah, it's a good.
We all have visions and plans for the mill, but it's just like.
It's a cool setting for something like that. I don't know what it looks like inside. So anyway, just something to think about, we'll be getting that out at the end of next week.
We should do one of those shooting obstacle courses through the mill, where like you crawl upstairs and all of a sudden a thing pops up.
Yeah, we were at Universal Studios, went to that, went a few weeks, and went to the Men in Black one. Yeah, I could do a Men in Black themed.
Yeah.
With that part of the stipulation.
Police Department.
It's a joke.
I think, isn't there a site somewhere up?
Yeah, that's all video, though. So you got a, just a plastic gun and you got a, so we, they invited the council to go with the police department. They have a, you know, someone sits behind a computer and shows different screen scenarios, and somebody opens a trunk and then pops out with a gun or whatever. It is pretty cool. My question was, what is going on the east side of Coburn's there that they're digging and tearing up?
That actually will be in next month's update, but I'll give it to you now. I think it was in Josh's weekly update last week to the council.
Yeah, I didn't read it.
Maybe, maybe it wasn't. Back in two thousand nine, Eastland second edition was platted. There's a lot, right, that's been there since oh nine, right on the southeast corner of the Alton Avenue and Trenton Avenue nineteen, roundabout there by Coburn's. And council had approved them to put that project on hold and the economy tanked. And they didn't put in a stub of First Street. Plans have been on the shelf since oh nine. They finally came in and put their letter of credit up, and we did that pre-con last Thursday to start construction of that road. So they're putting the road in, and that's going to make that one lot, it's a little over an acre, open for development for a commercial business, which is yet to be named.
Which First Street, though, am I confused on where?
It would, it doesn't line up with anything. Coburn's, it kind of lines up with the driveway to Coburn's, kind of right in front of the store, but it'll.
Like where, where O'Reilly Auto Parts is and everything, or?
Here, I'll just pull up the map for you.
I guess I just thought that was a parking lot, and I just.
Oops. But the weather got the better of them, and they're not going to get it done this fall. But they're going to have utilities and the road bed in and let it sit for the winter.
That is some cool software.
Zoom in a little better here. So the curb cut's been there, I don't know if you can see where my pointer is there?
Yeah.
So it's just extending the road a lot right on, the red is the center line of that right of way.
But I didn't realize that was considered a road.
Yep.
Like First Street or right in front of Coburn's there in the strip mall? I mean, that.
This is not a public road through Coburn's.
Oh, okay.
This will be a little First Street stub, and it actually is planned to go over to Bell's and then back south to Third.
Oh, okay.
But anyway.
So then that would open up that whole chunk of.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the, that'll open up more frontage right along the highway for commercial development. But it'll start with this one acre-ish lot right on the corner here.
Get your Taco Bell in there.
Or an Arby's, you know, that's a.
So that's, that's what's going on. They were really hoping to get the road done, but weather, they were working on the sanitary sewer and water today, I believe, so.
Yeah, see, we throw those out there, but everybody thinks that that's the city's job to bring in a Taco Bell.
Call, call, call the mayor, he loves those calls.
You know, Taco John's, Arby's, Applebee's and Aldi, those are the ones that they all want. Everybody wants it, it's like, it's not our job to, all they can do is zone it properly. They got to want to come here.
I was shocked at how expensive Taco Bell franchises are. I mean, to, I mean, it's like.
You got a one-ten of them to make money.
Yeah, or. Your average person doesn't have that kind of, you know.
I can start at Brandon's Tacos, like pull a trailer up there and just start selling Brandon's tacos.
Right.
If you guys want to get on the ground floor.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Of course, we were, we were in Kansas City over the M E weekend, that's where this shirt comes from. And we stopped at a food truck, and I kid you not, this is half the reason, but I was like, Kansas City short, the barbecue.
I would say it was a barbecue.
Oh, it was.